Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone.
Ms. Mead, here? Andy Mary. Mel Deep. Patrick McKenna. Danny Hyatt.
Here.
Danielle Yuska.
Here.
JD Schrader.
Here.
Jeanie Long.
Here.
And Michael.
Here.
Thank you, everyone. And we will jump right down to item two, the consent agenda. So if you're looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the minutes of the August 22nd, 2017 Board of Education meeting and the August 22nd, 2017 Special Board meeting on the budgetary. The financial report for August 2017 checks 7958 through 8076 in the amount of $2,217,057.32. ACH is number 17180011671800255 in the amount of $614,402.26. And a wire transfer in the amount of $17,862.4 for a total of $2,849,321.62.
Second. Okay, motion for Ms. Mead, second on this, by it. Any discussion on any of the items that are listed in the accounts? Hearing none. All those in favor? All right, both opposed? Item three, citizens' delegations.
No one signed up.
No one's signed up. Well, I would, I'm gonna make one public comment on my behalf here. I see where our tennis team, since we don't have student reps on the board yet, I see where our tennis team, girls' tennis team, won the conference title over the weekend for the first time in school history. That's my understanding. And I think that's something that they should be applauded for. So I think we should applaud them.
They broke Ray Lander's streak of seven years as conference champs. So that's even bigger.
That's an even bigger accomplishment.
And our coach, Amy Hyde, was noted as Coach of the Year as well.
Even better. So, we've done well, so. Just had to throw that out there. On to new business. First off, from the Committee of the Whole, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the minutes for that meeting.
I move the board approve the minutes of the Committee of the Whole on September 12th, 2017.
Second. Motion for Mr. McKenna, second for Mr. Mary. Any discussion? Questions, comments? Well, the, I will say this, that the board doc's website has a slightly new look to it. And it's potentially possible that some of us may have entered it through the public site rather than the individual one. So if you went through the public site, does mean I have access to the minute?
I did see it earlier, but I just noticed that now it's not.
And Andy Mary's picture. Eyes are closed on the picture.
That's pretty.
Just dreaming. Of what could be.
Okay, so if there is no questions or comments on any of those. All those in favor of the motion? All right, both opposed? Motion carries. Number five, discussion on hospital boarding. Timeline for the Mattoon School property.
Well, we had an update for you. I had sent you some information, and Tim, I don't know if I'm gonna go over that. It doesn't change our recommendation based on your last thinking on that. But we wanted you to have the history that we were able to locate when it happened with previous sale.
My recollection just wasn't as good as I thought it was. So I had talked to Dan Walrath, and I wasn't aware that we had not given them kind of a way of, you know, here's the school for sale, are you interested? They actually have done an appraisal. The appraisal came back at $150,000, and they offered them a smaller parcel at $100,000. So I just wanted that clarification before. So you had all the information that was actually accurate?
But, Tim, I thought whatever he sent out, they weren't really interested in it.
They were not because the building didn't really suit their needs. But they did end up buying a parcel at, I believe, the price of $2,000.
You know, I've been thinking about this, and like, I don't wanna sit on a building, but what's gonna happen when all these other schools close? Are we gonna want a dollar for all those schools? I'm struggling, 'cause I don't wanna sit on it, but I don't wanna give away all our elementary schools for a dollar either. And, you know, some of them could have put in. You know, and Mattoon doesn't have as much potential, 'cause they don't have as good land and everything. And to me, that's a selling point, but I don't know what the right amount would be. And I'm not saying that it necessarily has to be a lot, but I question a dollar.
I question a dollar too. I mean, this is our asset. And it's money that can come into the district. I'm not saying it, I mean, like, I agree with Danielle, I don't know how much we should ask for, but, you know, if we go for a referendum, and someone says, oh, hey, you sold a school for a dollar, why do you need a referendum?
I think there's a difference, a distinction. I mean, I definitely support like the asset approach, but I also look at it, if we're returning it or having municipalities, you know, so taxpayers or organized sort of citizens, you know, which are like townships or cities, you know, who want to do something public, you know, to better the community in that sense, you know, whether they use it for a community center at Mattoon or some other area where to, you know, use it as like a, you know, a museum for a public service or something like that. I guess I view that as a public good. And then in that sense, you know, it's, we're all the same taxpayers in that regard, and these are schools that people really cared about. And like Crestwood really wanted to do something with that space, you know, and I think it's the town of Norwood. Is that right? So the township, they want to do something, maybe even to honor the fact that that was a school for so many years. I would feel much better about, you know, releasing that building for a dollar than if it went to a private interest, you know, and someone got a sweet deal on it, which I don't think is, would be the case. So that's where I draw the distinction personally.
Yeah, and I don't say I disagree like a private versus municipal. But what's your opinion on down the road as we run into other schools?
You know, I think, you know, they have a lot of maintenance upkeep, and, you know, I think if we can get that sunk cost off of the district's hands quickly, I think that's the best thing. Then you're not having, you know, crews and staffs that have to shovel the driveways, have to keep it, you know, make sure that the pipes haven't frozen. It's like, just a disaster for some reason, or the boiler goes out now, and then we're all kind of like, what do we do with the boiler? Like, do we just put some, you know, heaters in there, you know, to keep it from freezing? Or, you know, I just think having it, having them gone will be, you know, in particular if someone can use them. That is appropriate.
I think like Pleasant View has, they still have ballgames there, right? The other two, they have ball fields around.
Spring Valley knows, and Crestwood doesn't, I mean, they have a bad time to play there.
But I can envision the township's taking those over partly to keep those ball fields and partly to keep those gyms and use them. 'Cause the communities use those right now. I could even envision like Pleasant View, you know, maybe it's athlete enroll and wanna go together, I mean, somehow. Crestwood could be the same way.
Well, I feel like if we're offering it to a municipality, and the municipality says no. To me, as a private person, Mattoon doesn't have as much value as our other schools. I mean, you could look at it for the land, you know, and use it for some others like that. I just don't know that if we don't come to an agreement with the village of Mattoon, like, I don't know if you guys know anybody else privately that's interested in it. I mean, I feel like kind of apprehensive about that, like, thinking that we're gonna do it.
You don't want to tell you to put it off for sale.
That's true. That's why I'm curious.
There might be somebody out there assuming we're gonna give it to Mattoon, so why even ask?
Yeah, that could be. But we've also discussed having it differently as well. I mean, if we say to the municipality, you know, the village of Mattoon will sell you this for a dollar, but we've agreed that if that falls through, the price for private, correct?
Yeah, I don't think we'd sell it to an individual for a dollar, do you? Or you think we just get rid of it, 'cause then we're gonna be losing money?
Somehow you have to.
Auction it off.
Auction it off, or have a Realtor or something, yes.
Did we offer to Mattoon for any?
Not for a price, we didn't name a price. And they're asking for that to be in writing, they would like it to be in writing.
Did we tell them yet that we wouldn't let them use it as a school?
We have had no further conversation with them since they asked for what it is that you want to sell, what your timeline is, and what your price is.
Did you by any chance ask Kevin, now and after I was really thinking about it? Like, if we put in the purchase offer, we'll sell it to you, the village of Mattoon, for a dollar, but you owe us $500,000? If you turn it into a school at some point, how we make that survive closing? It might take some sort of legal deed restriction or something that I don't quite know how to do, but something.
I didn't bring it to him yet.
You might have to ask him if we can even do that. I didn't think of that when I was, we were talking about it last time.
Well, and at this point, the only thing we directed administration to was to get an appraisal, correct?
Did we even direct?
I don't think we did.
You did not, we, I think we still have a schedule.
We have a schedule.
We have one scheduled for October, right? So we still have one.
I don't think we'll get that money back, so I don't know that it's worth doing the appraisal. I just didn't know $1,000 was like, you know, selling for $1,000.
Well, and realistically, we've done it both ways. We, I believe when we did the Anawa school, we sold that building to the village for a nominal fee. And we turned around and we sold River Grove for a different amount of money. So there's, there's really no precedent been set on doing it one way or another.
What about Lily?
Lily, we haven't.
That one I don't.
I know what we did in the end, I don't know what we did in the beginning. In the end, it ended up being sold. We put just a bid, private bid in the paper, and allowed people to make an offer. And I'm sure that Andrew Joe would've reached out to the township up there to see if they were interested, but we got. And even say, I found this worth your $15,000 for 107 acres. It wasn't a lot of money.
Somebody's still using the building, aren't they?
Yeah, it's a, the family was, their intention was to make an antique shop out of it.
The $1 is just appealing to me, like we talked about, for the community mending aspects, more so than anything, assuming they're gonna use it for a community center or play kickball or.
I would rather see it go to a community for a dollar than to sell it for $60,000 or $70,000 like we did River Grove and watch it deteriorate over the next 20 years.
I agree.
I mean, would you agree, Tim, that River Grove's kinda drive by and stop looking so high? For being the best, it was at that point, probably the best school in the district, Crestwood Elementary School.
You're being offered a chance to do a penny.
He's not gonna give it to you.
It was very nice.
He's sitting right here. I didn't much care what I said, but you touched it.
Tim says, I wish I would've bought that building myself, it's so beautiful.
No, but it's, I think a community is more, you have to maintain that building, make a long-term decision.
I'd like to see us make, give an offer, not a dollar, but a reasonable offer, I really would.
What do you think that number is?
Let's start off with 75, which is still cheap.
75,000?
Yes.
I was hoping you were saying 75 dollars.
75,000, you're thinking?
Yeah.
I feel like that would be high.
You know, and they can always come back with a dollar offer.
I think if you were gonna set a price, you'd wanna go get that appraisal to inform that before you would do that. And one of the things that we talked about at the last meeting was just how much money it is going to cost us to keep it open. So if you got 75, you're really not going to get 75 if it drags on for a period of time and we maintain that, keep that through the winter. One of the other pieces of the conversation was just about strengthening, the community of Mattoon does strengthen, the strength of Anago. If that is a healthy community that people continue to live in and thrive in, and they send their kids to our schools. You know, it's the strong school, strong community school, so that was part of the discussion that we had last time. The other part was, at what cost do we hang on to it while a sale may break out?
You know, one thing, we can't think of it kind of black and white from both the village of Mattoon and the school district. We pay them over $600 a month to be able to just sort of order. So essentially, they're probably paying $650 a month on us.
What are we gonna pay for, keep there if we kinda keep it warm?
The ballpark is gonna be between that $15,000 and $20,000 for all things considered.
For the year.
So we can sell it for 75,000 next spring or 50,000 right now and have the same amount of money?
I think we'll go for 15,000. Or even 1,000 dollars, I don't know, I mean, I would.
A lot of people.
If I'm not a man who will support whatever decisions made, but you just got $5,000.
I think too, the fact that, having an appraisal done, if we turn around and offer it to the village for, let's say, $2,500, is just enough. And the appraisal value comes back on it that it's worth five times that. And the village blocks answer, well, no, we want it. Okay, then we can turn around and use that appraisal as our number to then turn around, if a private individual wants to buy, here's your number. So you know what the actual property value is.
I'm gonna make a motion that we go ahead with the appraisal. And go from there.
If I do for that.
Well, okay, then the motion is just that we direct administration to move forward with the appraisal to Mattoon School.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Mary, second from Ms. Long to move forward with the appraisal of the Mattoon School property. Any discussion on the motion?
If we give it away for a dollar?
We'll wait to see. Hearing no discussion, Bobby, let's do roll call.
Andy Mary. Patrick McKenna.
No.
Danny Hyatt.
Yes.
Danielle Yuska.
No.
JD Schrader.
No.
Jeanie Long.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
No.
Mike Boldy.
Yes.
We are tied. Motion goes nowhere.
I move that we move ahead with offering the School of Mattoon for a dollar with stipulations regarding no class, no teaching or, you know, no, that it not be a school with the stipulations we've provided previously.
What about Patrick selling the property after they get it? 'Cause we did talk about that in the meeting too.
Say that again, you think.
If we give the, give the village of Mattoon for a dollar, then they turn around, sell it. I know we're talking about the motion. We're getting premature here, because we're discussing the motion before it has a second. So we need to have a second on the motion first before we can discuss it.
I think if you do a deed restriction, you, it would continue to stop.
It needs a second.
Yeah, and those stipulations.
Now, we have a motion for Mr. McKenna, second for Ms. Mead, to offer the Mattoon School to the village for $1 with stipulations. Now we can have a discussion. Does the motion need to state those stipulations?
It can be amended.
It can be a well-worded motion or poorly worded. Either one's good.
I believe the motion should state those stipulations.
I would, I'd be okay in general. You mean like the ones, we talked about, like the $500,000.
Plus it's not writing, don't have it, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, but pending legal counsel?
Right, we need help. Because even if you, 'cause like you said, if we sell to them for a dollar and try to restrict them from making it a school, and they sell to someone else for $2, and then they make it to be a school.
Whatever they wanna make it.
Then we need something, we need a deed restriction that survives, and you know, I'm pretty sure that's possible, but it's been a long time since I looked at something like that.
So can this be referred to legal counsel rather than voting?
I mean.
Well, there is a motion on the floor, so we do need to.
Didn't we, didn't, we had an appraisal for that, for its value as a school?
Like 700,000?
For its value as a school, yeah.
700, whatever, but so why don't we make that?
The amount?
The amount.
Okay. I just thought I was giving them a small deal.
And I was looking at my notes, was that if they did it within a particular period of time, or if ever?
Ever.
I think we said if ever.
So then we would need, remember to motion add in the stipulations.
Do we?
If we're gonna get specific, I think we need to amend the motion to list those specific numbers.
And just can we add pending approval by legal counsel before?
Yeah, pending legal approval. Yeah, so amend the motion that the stipulations include no, how to word this, no school, no?
No daycare or?
Educational facilities.
That the Mattoon School not be used as an educational facility, now or ever. With a penalty of $750,000 that the municipality will, you'll pay back, period. And then, and that the stipulation is pending legal language.
To make that work for the month?
To make it work.
Then what if they use it as a community center and you wanna teach basket weaving?
Yeah, that's, I was kinda wondering, like, nothing educational, I don't.
You know, I mean, I think for us to follow through, well, you know, I think that's always gonna be. That's always gonna be decided, right? I mean, I think they could say, gosh, we wanna teach basket weaving, U5 School District, is that okay? U5 School, it'd be like, absolutely, that sounds wonderful. We want to have a kindergarten through, you know, 5th grade, you know, U5 School District, is that okay? No, you know, I think, I think, you know, it'll always be decided in a legal manner anyway if someone's gonna push something.
So how about just no preschool or elementary school?
No, I like educational facility, we can, I hope that never has to be litigated, but I think it'll be pretty clear.
You're right, if they wanna.
An extracurricular.
Yeah, I think so, extracurricular.
Yeah, so if we wanted to do that?
Educational facility.
Okay, now, if I've got this right.
You got it.
I'm not making it in the form of a motion yet, but I wanna make sure I'm understanding this correctly. You are looking to amend your motion by adding wording to say that the stipulations of not being used as an educational facility with a $750,000 penalty is so used pending the advice of legal counsel.
What about selling it to an investor? When they turn around and use it?
Well, pending legal counsel, so legal counsel can sort that out and give us those hypotheticals and tell us how we have to word it. And I think that's.
For the school, you mean?
Yeah, for the school.
When you say sell to an investor, do you mean that they would get it for a dollar and they'd sell it to somebody who would turn it into apartments?
Yeah. Well, you know, if they did that, that's a community decision, I think that would, if they perceive that as benefiting the community. I don't think we were gonna do that, you know, I think I would feel bad about doing that, but that would be a local decision made by a local government.
Tim, you wanna run a partner bill in Mattoon? Wait, you guys.
Tim and Jake both switch them.
Just say it, we can bring in some extra money.
Unfortunately, this one, Tim, you're out. All righty.
Instead of Prosser Place, Prunty Place? Thank you.
Do you wish to make your amendment in the form of a motion?
That the, so this is for the amendment?
Yep.
The stipulations from, that referred to in the amendment are as follows. And then you had, what did you write down, Tim, I mean, what?
I wrote down that it was going to not be used as an educational facility with a $750,000 penalty if so used pending the advice of legal counsel.
Just, and can you add in the, no matter who owns it? The penalty's still. We got it in there, in that, yeah.
Now, this is the amendment, so do we have a second on the amendment? So we have a motion by Dr. McKenna, second by Ms. Yuska, to amend the motion. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, hearing none, we vote on the amendment first. Bobby, let's do roll call.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
Danny Hyatt.
Yes.
Danielle Yuska.
Yes.
JD Schrader.
Yes.
Jeanie Long.
No.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Andy Mary.
Yes.
Mike Boldy.
Yes.
Okay, the motion is amended, so now the motion that we'll be voting on is as follows. Offer the Mattoon School to the village for a dollar with stipulations, and the stipulations are that it is not to be used as an educational facility with a $750,000 penalty if so used pending the advice of legal counsel. Any discussion on the amended motion?
Do we have to rescind our motion if Kevin comes back and says, I can't make it work that that penalty would survive closing? That's, that's pending, right?
Yeah, that's pending, right, it won't survive if. If you can't make it work.
He probably won't know how, he's gonna have to go ask a different lawyer in his firm. Is that a school lawyer, not a deed restriction lawyer?
What Kevin has at this point is neither here nor there. The motion, any further discussion on that? Bobby, roll call.
Danny Hyatt.
Yes.
Danielle Yuska.
He passed right now.
Tim, but you do have to vote on it.
Yes, I don't do that.
Go ahead, go ahead, Bobby.
JD Schrader.
Yes.
Jeanie Long.
No.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Andy Mary.
No.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
Danielle Yuska.
No.
Mike Boldy.
Yes.
Five to three, the motion carries. Okay. We proceed along those lines. There, on to item B, implementation of ALICE security programs.
So Tim's gonna, Jake's gonna take you through, but before he does, I wanna say what a good job he did with, if some of you stayed. For this, you know that he did a really superb job, and I do think it is pretty unique how well all of the different safety entities work together in this county. I think that our ALICE training was really spectacularly done. It's a lot to kind of absorb in what was already a full day, but I think that all of the people who led it were very well prepared and thoughtful. I think it's very important, and I just wanna recognize, I think, Jake for his leadership.
So, does everybody know what ALICE is? Has everybody heard of it, at least a little bit, no kind of adjusted it? Okay, ALICE is a, I guess it's a. Okay, ALICE is a, um, I guess it's a, a safety thought process or program that helps you make decisions based on each scenario more than just have a cut and dry, you know, when, when A happens, you do actually B. It really empowers the staff to, to analyze the situation and make the decisions. We, we obviously give them the top choices they can make, but it really just empowers them to think critically and make the best as possible for their exact situation at that exact time. ALICE is nationwide and it's been, really started, kicked off with Combine is what it really kinda started being thought of. Basically, it's a, if you can get out of the building safely, get out. If you do have to do the traditional lockdown, you barricade the door, if it is difficult for entry to that, that room is possible. And if they do enter the room, um, those that feel compelled to, um, can engage and try to, they do what's called the swarm tactic to basically overtake that room. Obviously, anytime you're talking about physically encountering someone, that's something that we don't encourage and don't tell them they have to do it in any way, shape or form, but it's, um, I guess it's kind of a last resort theory. In a, no way out. We give them that as an option and teach them, because they're in that situation. It's approved by pretty much every law enforcement across the nation. We're, I would say we're dependent towards the latter part of the movement across the nation as far as implementing this. And a lot of our strong districts already. But it is a, it's a huge, it's a huge shift, you know, the, the old, the old ways that were told. We weren't wrong for doing them that way. And anybody that believes in that way can, you know, they, if they think that that's the right thing to do, they still can't do it. We're not saying that you're necessarily wrong for making a decision. It's just giving you options is really the, the biggest thing.
So this is our first year doing this?
Yeah.
Yep, I brought it, we kinda brought it up through the LEAP committee. Is everyone in the LEAP? Okay.
LEAP is Lingley Emergency Action Planning, and this is something that Tim started working on prior to me starting. And then I kinda really got it going once I, once I started it. Tim downloaded it after, oh, shh, shh. They have a community-wide program that has been running for almost fifteen years now, and it includes, our, our group includes Lingley County Sheriff's Department, Police Department, Fire Department, EMS, the County Emergency Management, Aspire's Hospital, County Health Department, All Saints, Peace Lutheran, White Lake, Elko, and Annual School District. Um, we meet once a month and talk more possibilities that, um, to get everybody on the same page that if, if a crisis does happen or an emergency does happen, law enforcement and the response team are really at benefit here today, know exactly what they're gonna walk into. And in turn, we know what those teams are gonna want, what they're gonna need, what they're going to be looking for for us to do in a response. I'm gonna take you more everything from something such as ALICE or an active shooter down to, you know, mental health concerns within the schools and the, um, community, because eventually they're gonna get to our school buildings no matter what. So it's a really good program. And everybody's been very excited about it, they've been very inter- interactive with it. I just think it's a huge stepping stone for the community. So we brought that up through, through that program. I also used LEAP when we looked at the camera systems last year and the scare instances. We brought that through there to make sure that all those entities were on the same page as far as making the right decision. So obviously, they, they approved of this and we started working on how we're gonna implement it. And June, we had, we hosted a training here for, to get certified trainers for ALICE. There was approximately twenty-four annual school district employees that took that in our certified trainers. And of the other ident, of the other departments that are in the LEAP group and some outside, um, people from Merrill came and some people from Green Bay came, there was over fifty people that, that took that training. From there, um, I picked people in each building, um, mostly principals and I don't lead teacher, um, some custodial staff. Tried to be well-rounded, but still haven't started enough where they were gonna be in every building, so. My, my goal is to have at least two people in each building that were certified trainers. I know that could change over time, but, um, hopefully, once we get fully implemented, implemented this year, it wouldn't be such a shock to pull one of the trainers all over the place, so, so choose to go in a different building, but. In, in the end of August, when we had our welcome back week, myself, Mark Weston, the principal at Elko and White Lake, Sean Hoads and Glenn Boldy, and Amy. Todd Meyer, Anita. Dale Lenzman, he's a retired sheriff's department, he's, he was represented from All Saints. We did a presentation at the welcome back week, um, kinda just filling in the whole district. Not only our district, White Lake and Elko plus their employees can hear to the home. And we had a community-wide briefing on just what ALICE is. ALICE stands for alert, which basically just means pay attention to noises, beware of your surroundings. If you hear something funny, don't just assume it's nothing or see something that seems out of place, don't just assume it's, you know, let somebody know, talk about it. Lockdown. Lockdown, obviously, if you can't exit the building safely, you do have to lock down. And that's where you would barricade the door to try and make it difficult for someone to come in. Inform is communicate with everybody to try and get. If, if there's someone that can get out of the PA system, you go on the PA system and you'd be very clear that there's a, uh, you know, Caucasian male, mid twenties, wearing a black sweatshirt in the second floor of academics. Use very plain language, sometimes that makes the shooter nervous and leaves, but more importantly, it lets everybody else know where they are, what they're doing, what they look like. Counter would be if they do get in the room, that is an option, that's to counter the shooter and/or evacuate. And that if you, if you had your choice, you'd want to evacuate. Typically, if there's a crisis in the building, there is. There's never been any documented cases where it's, you know, been a, a two-person setup where it's taken advantage of the evacuation or the shooter has followed a group, typically they, they stand in the building, that's just how they work if there are two, they're typically side by side. But the, the same is thing is typically possible. That acronym is not sequential, just because alert is first and evacuated is last doesn't mean that has to be the way they go. You can take the proper one at any time. I guess, does anybody have any questions?
Can you only get access to the intercom from the central office or can like any teacher talk through it from anywhere?
Nope, there is an all-call feature, um, at high school and middle school. Yeah, at high school and middle school, there's an all-call feature. Um, the elementary's, for some reason, they don't have that set up right now, we're working on that. What they're calling systems.
It sounds to me like it's just a reverse approach of what, everything that you ever heard in the past, where it's rather than everybody gathering into one spot to try and avoid it. You're basically, beat feet, get out of the building and make it harder for that individual or individuals to create a problem.
There's some really good, um, information, like Jake said, you know, back when we were all barricading, that was based on the best information that you had. But now when they go back and they study some of these other things like Combine, where the teacher in the room was telling all the kids to hide under the desk, and they didn't know, hindsight's 2020, but there was an exit to the outside where all kinds of law enforcement were. They waited there and then, I don't know, all of them or a bunch of them were killed quite blank. And then the same thing when they did the Virginia attack in different classes, classrooms where they barricaded versus where someone out the window and maybe sustained some broken bones, but classes where they just hunkered down and didn't barricade or try to fight back, there were more deaths. So, so you really have options now, you can still barricade in a traditional fashion or, or lockdown, you can barricade. And we'll go through where we have training in nature, the schools and the staff will go through this and, um, and I went through this in my previous district, and they'll be howling file cabinets and whatever in front of doors to barricade, otherwise you'll try to get out. And then eventually we'll do a walkthrough tabletop kind of exercise with students. Another piece of it is that you do have these reunification sites established for each school so that if they do flee to those particular spots, that they're trying to come back together for rescue personnel and reorganization. So it's very good training and I think, um, I think the way that it's been introduced is, is really good in the district.
So, just previous to having our welcome back week where we brought everybody into the home and had a roll result the first time district-wide, we did send a letter to the parents, um, just saying FYI, we're, we're keeping up with best practice on our safety procedures. We are winning this, they call ALICE and gave them just a quick overview. And if they have any questions, contact their, their building administrators.
And that's what I previously shared with you in case you were hearing things or had questions.
Going forward, starting this Friday at All Saints, um, is our first, um, drill scenario with the staff. And what we're gonna do is just a couple, it makes a lot of sense when you go through the drill and you, you do the traditional lockdown where you just close the door, shut the lights off and sit in the corner. And we actually have, um, law enforcement will be there and I will be at all the trainings and other certified instructors that we have, um, airsoft equipment and protective equipment for the staff. And we go through these scenarios, and the first one is the traditional lockdown where an intruder comes in and just does what they do when the school student walks directly up to the group of people sitting in the corner. And the staff is directed, you cannot, you're just sit there, you can't run, you can't counter, you can't do anything to them. And the second one is a forced evacuation, that you put the, the active shooter in the hallway and tell people to exit the room, even though he's standing there, exit the room. And the third one is, uh, you can barricade and lock, and if he can't get in, that's the best case scenario. Or if he's at the other end of the hall, you, you'll make the decision, well, a couple of classrooms, one may exit because he's in another classroom or what, what hap, but the, the biggest thing is all three of those scenarios we do, counts of people that got hit. And it's just, it is, it almost makes you just stop and it, it's really eye-opener to see from the traditional sit in the corner to the forced evacuation when you're directly going right past the shooter to either counter or evacuate or barricade. The numbers on those that get hit are just stuff, it just drops stuff.
So the train is to go out into the hallway where the active shooter is to evacuate?
We, we make, we make them do that middle one where we tell them he is standing there outside the door, but just evacuate anyways to prove or to show the fact that a, the shooter under stress with all sorts of confusion cannot acquire as many targets as if you just sit there. We're not saying to run at, at an active shooter, um, but we're just showing that if you do choose to exit, a moving target is a heck of a lot more than someone sitting. You know, I, I would certainly recommend to anybody if they peek out the door and they see the shooter to close the door, barricade would be the, the wisest choice. But again, that's, the main, the main purpose of this whole program is to empower people to make the smartest decision that they can for the situation that they're in. You know, some students, you know, say you have a classroom of four kids, they're not gonna be nearly as mobile as a class at high school. So to tell out there if the shooter's fifty yards away, evacuate, you can, you can't make that determination for every situation, so. It's really just a, a mindset and a culture, a way of thinking.
Case by case.
Yep, is the biggest positive side of the, of it.
It's important to go through those walkthroughs because you may have a class of mixed ability students, you maybe have a student with special needs that's not particularly mobile, and the teacher would have to think through, could I send the students on their own to the reunification site? Well, I would barricade with a student, particular students, or is there an aide that would go with the kids and the teacher's gonna stay? So it's good to have the opportunity to do the tabletop exercises so you get some lockdown.
And it, and it, it is a heavy, heavy subject, I mean, you never wanna think about having to do those things. You, you, you'd like to just push them in the corner and never think about it, and just pray it doesn't happen, but, in two thousand and fifteen, across the United States, there was an average of one shooting per week in a school.
Didn't they have a bill in the Wisconsin legislature to allow teachers to be armed?
There was talk about it.
I don't know where it went.
Have you heard of any states that can do that? Do they just, Wisconsin.
Not that I've heard of.
Got every state.
Lake of One. Texas. This is the same state that has drive-through liquor stores and gun stores in the same building.
So, I, I missed one piece. After we did the, the presentation at the welcome back week, um, ALICE does a really nice job of, they, they have an e-learning portion, they'll chase an hour and it's interactive. And you pay per user seven dollars and eighty cents per employee to get on the website that has, it's an interactive video that is a question and answer quiz at the end of each section. It takes about an hour to go through and that really breaks down, uh, kind of the actual tables of what T really means, what that looks like, what, what the thought processes in that reaction stage. And it just does a really, really nice job of playing it all up. I thought that it was very important to roll this off the right way and not have it seem, wow, yeah, it's just another, just another acronym.
It's a program.
Program. And I've been hearing a lot of very positive feedback from the staff on that. That's something that we require to refresh annually, same with, um, you know, every year we have to do so many fire drills and tornado drills and things like that. Well, the last time a child or a staff member was, was killed in a school fire was nineteen fifty eight.
You mean in?
In the nation.
In the nation?
And we do fire drills multiple times. Yeah, once a month.
That's right.
And we do zero active shooter drills under one week.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it also helps to, like, going through those scenarios is, you will in time to stress remember that stuff if we are doing it, because it's gonna be hard to think when that scenario happens.
And the video was really good, I mean, it gives you good information that when you do escape the building, how to not be mistaken as one of the, you know, culprits with hands up and if they are going to take, if they are going to attack the person and taking down, what you do with the weapon that's recovered so that the police don't storm into the room and you holding a weapon, and so it was, it was really excellent video training.
So the staff is required to complete that by, um, this Friday. And then, starting, like I said, this Friday at All Saints and then throughout the whole month of October. I said, this Friday at All Saints and then throughout the whole month of October, for one hour at the end of each day, or not each day, it's probably three quarters of the day throughout the month, Monday through Thursday. Each school, in the middle school and the high school, have two or three sessions because they have so many staff members. We're gonna hold those drills for an hour after school with just the staff. So that month of October will implement the drill portion out to the entire staff. The next step to that is going to be looking at doing a full evacuation to the rally point where we, like at Pleasant View, Fleishman, they go far across the road, that's our rally point. And the whole school literally leaves the building and walks down the road. We'll have law enforcement throughout all these drills, we'll always have law enforcement with us. Eric Roller and Mark Weston have committed to this, they're 100% on board to support us. So in that situation, we'll barricade the roads off through our evacuation so that the kids can actually see, okay, when we evacuate, if I don't know where to go, this is where I need to go. And they physically go there so they can remember, not just, oh, I know I was told to go somewhere, but I've never been there, so I'm not sure where to go.
Is that the trade-off? Because if you don't tell them where they're going, you have like a buddy who is your partner shooter, he's setting the evacuation point if they already know where it is.
Yeah, you know, and those are certainly questions that I myself have, in everything that I've been shown or told by experts in this. The people who do these crimes just don't think that way. They think, they wanna create the most devastation possible with the least chance of getting caught. If they're outside the four walls of that building, they can, they can get shot fairly easy. Even though the end game, they're probably gonna take their own life. They, they don't feel comfortable. They're afraid they're gonna get caught, they're gonna get noticed, someone driving out, someone's gonna see them before they can do anything. They just, they don't do that typically. And hopefully that mentality never changes in most people. It certainly, certainly could. I'm not gonna say it would never happen, but today, they're just, the people who do these don't think that way. You know, same thing, you could look at morning arrival or afternoon dismissal. Again, there's so many people around that create, you know, high law enforcement presence during those dismissal and arrival times, that they get scared. They don't, they don't wanna be contacted by people that go back to our secure entrances. Their biggest fear is getting caught. So making them even walk past that secretary will stop the majority, just because they're afraid of that human contact they don't want in any way. We have to do the evacuation drill and we need to figure out, and this is where, every school's a little different, every grade's a little bit different, and now every kid is a little bit different. And that's where we really need to tap into our staff resources and discuss with them how we, how we implement this with the students without being too severe on them. Alice makes two kids books, the ones, their cartoon, their like, the thin like kindergarten books. And I said, I'm not scared, I'm prepared. That's the title of the book. And it's just a fun, interactive way for a teacher to sit down with some kindergarten kids and read through a book and just kinda say, you know, if there's a bad guy here, I might tell you to do something, so just be prepared to listen to me. You know, just a very soft presentation on it. All the way up to, you know, when you get into the high school, we may do more, maybe little tabletop in the classroom or something along those lines. Alice has been great at Art Doorfar. Originally, we're with the Green Bay School District. They rolled out Alice, like 10 years ago, eight years ago, drilled the entire Green Bay School District. They were the instructors we had. They came up and helped us hot wash after the shooting there. They're a great resource for us and we're the other month or anything you need. We are always here for any, we'll always be here. I call them. I brought a couple presentation tips from them. They're a great resource. They've done this. They're now employed by Alice Institution and go all over the nation doing these train the trainer sessions. So they're gonna make sure that we do this right. They're there for us. It's not just Jake going out on his personal mission and trying to pull this off. I got a lot of, a lot of good help internally and externally. We got a lot of good staff members here.
Good work on that, just not fun to think about.
Before we do the actual evacuation drills with the students, I'm thinking that'll be in the spring or possibly first thing in the fall, we will notify the parents and we want to invite them. Ed Farb suggested they did it and it was very, very productive for parents to at least be invited to observe the evacuation so they felt comfortable with what we were asking their students to do. So we wanna be very sensitive of that. And if you guys hear anything and need any answers or whatever, you can always contact me. I can either help you with the answers or you can just send them to me directly if you want. It's a, it's a heavy subject, but once you've talked through with people, a lot of them are just, I mean, a lot of the responses that I've heard from our own staff is it's a bold time. They're, they're happy, they're excited. I'm sure there's some that aren't as enthusiastic, but the most part that I've heard is they're very happy to be calling on us.
In which you have a system in place that people can understand and realize that we take this stuff very seriously as a district. It's just that much easier to work with parents and staff on it because they know the safety of their kids is of the utmost concern. Thank you.
Let's go out to H.I.T.O.C. Hopefully that's a little more.
A little lighter.
A little lighter subject. Wish, would we like to have them out of bed?
Still sadness.
It's a sad role to me.
Okay, the first document during the night can be opened up is the Third Friday Count. So that's the Third Friday, 2017-18. The building secretaries actually do the counting for us on the Third Friday. And then Cindy Fisher's office prepares this report and Jan Schmidt, her administrative assistant, really is responsible for gathering this information. So what I want you to focus on is that bottom number in the corner where we're going to grade totals and we're at 2303. Last year's Third Friday Count was 2360. So this Third Friday Count, our kids in seats in Anago. So then, the next document, I guess, are there questions on that, on that sheet first of all?
Was that a lot of people from Mattoon or was it a?
I'll give you the breakdown of Jakey maybe in the next document. So if we go to the enrollment open tab, and let's start out with the box on the upper right, which is the 2016, 17 versus 17, 18 enrollment estimate. The first thing is, is that the Third Friday Count that I showed you is Jan's current document. She, tomorrow morning, will be verifying the numbers and will making, will be making the submission of the enrollment to DPI. So the numbers that I'm showing you tonight are still in a draft form. Bobby's responsible for calculating, keeping track of the open enrollments in and out of the district. So we take the Third Friday Count and the first thing we do is we subtract off the early childhood and the 4K enrollment. So if you look at the box, it says K-12 programs and then it's got 2016, 2017 versus the 17, 18. And you can see there now, we've taken those numbers off because I'm using this calculation for our revenue limit. So that's what I'm interested, where are we going with the budget? So you can see that we've had a difference of minus 66 students in K-12 from last year over this year. Then, when we go to the revenue limit, we don't count kids the same way. So we look at 4K kids and we get a .5. We look at, I'm sorry, 4K kids are a .6, early childhoods are a .5. So I'm trying to figure out what's gonna be our FTE for the revenue limit. And when you look at the two numbers there, we're down 60 students for the revenue limit. Now we have to account for ins and out of the district, which is where Bobby comes in. So Bobby supplies us that information and you can see open enrollment out. Where last year we're at 135, this year we're at 114. Then we go to the next line and you have 43 students open enrolled in last year versus 41 this year. So bottom line is, for revenue limit purposes, last year our number was 2398. This year we're at 2320. And I was using an enrollment projection of 2354. So we're down 34 students, more than I had built into the budget. So we, fortunately for us, we have a three-year rolling average. So we're taking that difference of 34 students and we're dividing that essentially by three. And then DPI in the revenue limit formula has a hold harmless provision that we have to at least have the same amount of revenue as we had in the base year. And then we get a declining enrollment exemption on top of that. So the bottom line is, we're gonna end up, because we have a greater loss of students than we had projected, we're gonna end up getting a larger exemption, which means we'll have more revenue limit authority, which is counterintuitive to what it should be. But that's a one-time exemption, so we're gonna, we're gonna end up, it's, without having the number verified, I don't wanna say off the top of my head, but it's gonna be probably a hundred to $150,000 more revenue limit authority because we've lost more students one time.
But we get the one-time thing every time it happens.
Yeah, but the next year, we subtract that exemption off and you start from that same base of 9275. And we had, one of the board members asked me about my feelings on the low revenue limit ceiling that didn't get vetoed out of the budget. That would've been a case where we could've raised our base. Every year, the declining enrollment and hold harmless exemption comes off and we start out at that same base of 9275. That's where we start from.
Did you talk to Mary about that at all? They're gonna try to override that by any chance? Did you?
She's coming out Friday.
What I found was interesting is they had Governor Walker, I think he went to Dean or Minnachah, one of their schools, and the principal of the building thanked the governor for coming, but told the governor she was disappointed that that section of the real budget got vetoed and she hoped that he included in future budgets. So I thought that was interesting.
Tim, do you wanna talk about the population leaving on vouchers?
Oh, that'll be the next, I think it's in the next agenda. But then on the right-hand side, it's just a, it's kind of a breakdown where Bobby's information is very detailed. It's got directory information, addresses, and we've just taken it and summarized it. So you can look at our ins and outs and you can compare where the kids are going and where they're coming from. And it just gives you a little rundown. And it's really just, you know, what grade level, where they're at, and it just provides you with a little information.
What was the number of kids going to Wittenburg, Burnavod, if we went back a year or two further?
That's right. 1617 is 60 and this year's 59.
Can you go back any farther?
Purely if you had the.
15, 16 or 14, 15.
Oh, yeah, we have that at the, yeah, we have that. I don't know what else.
Andy, my recollection is it's been hovering around 70, 75 for quite a while. You know, it might've been at one time higher than that, but.
So this is no higher than is traditionally?
I actually think it's down this year's quite a bit from where it used to be. I can give that to Colleen if she wants to throw it in the weekly memo.
What's the number of between last year and this year with open holdout? Because that went down.
Yeah, it went down by 22 kids.
Yeah, 22 kids.
And the ins dropped by four?
Well, there is a big change in alcohol from 28 to 12.
Any questions on that then?
No. Although I do have a comment. I had somebody arguing with me, the Third Friday Count is supposed to be this Friday, or the 15th. Well, school didn't start this, yeah, but it's the Third Friday of the month, the first, the 15th. Good job, thank you.
Wisconsin Parental Choice Program.
Okay, now this is something that's really new to the district. And essentially, Peace Lutheran has chosen to become, I'm gonna just, for simple terms, call them a voucher school. So they're participating in the Wisconsin Parental Choice Program. My understanding of the program is, as part of the revenue limit calculation, there's one line in there where DPI is going to plug in a number. And they're essentially gonna give us a number for the number of the tuition payment that is due from the Anago schools to Peace Lutheran for their children enrolling in this program. We're, right now, the estimate on DPI's website is just shy of $7,400 per student that qualifies. And the FTE or the student enrollment is based on the same type of calculation that we have for the revenue limit. So kindergarten through eighth grade is, for each student is one FTE, but 4K depending on if you have outreach services or not, is either a .5 or a .6. And then for each voucher student that they have, we will raise the local levy by $7,400. And when we get our aid payment from DPI, DPI will then subtract off the tuition that is owed from the Anago School District to Peace from our aid payment. So we levy it, but they get.
So the State Journal did an article on this last February and I was interviewing part of that story, and what I said then now, what I said then holds true now, really puts public schools in an unenviable position as a middleman. So you have to go collect those dollars from your taxpayers without a lot of transparency. So unless we tell the story of the fact that we're collecting those dollars, which are then handed off to that private school, your taxpayers think that those dollars are coming to you to be used in your schools. So it's a very unenviable middleman position that I'm an outspoken critic of.
So Dave, I talked to Dave Reinecke, the principal of our Peace Lutheran. And right now, they have 43 voucher students that are in the Parental Choice Program. Six of those, and Dave isn't required by law to tell us this, he's just doing it because I asked him. So I appreciate knowing the numbers. So they have six 4K and 37 K8 students that are in the voucher program. And Dave is estimating that 24 of the students were new students to their school system. And I And I don't know a lot about the Parental Choice Program, I know that you get open enroll into the program as a 4K, a K, and a first grade. So they've got 24 new students and 13 existing students in those grade levels. So on September 29th, we'll get a notification, DPI has this, I talked about the revenue limit formula, we're going to get a notification probably either late Friday afternoon or over the weekend, what that number for the revenue will be. So it'll just give us additional taxing authority, and it's, DPI's number is final, and we can choose to levy it, or we can choose not to.
And our recommendation would be that you levy it. Otherwise, you cut short your public school budget.
So what happens with open enrollment, which is a little confusing, when our students go out, we pay the neighboring district or wherever they go, we pay $6,750 to the neighboring district, we collect 9275 for each student. So we're still getting accounted, we're getting some revenue. With the voucher program, we don't count anything.
The lack of transparency is pretty deep with that program, in the sense that public school students, like you saw in the sheet where Bobby and Jan do all this tracking, so that one public school student has an ID, and we know exactly where that student lands, if they are our resident student and they go somewhere else, right? And all the public school districts are busy in the fall of the year, tracking those students back and forth. The reality is that if this principal didn't share that information with Tim, we're not even allowed to know who they are, to verify that they are your students, where those dollars are flowing.
The 13 that you said were existing, they don't get voucher payment for them, though? I thought this was only new students.
With, if they are in kindergarten, if they're in 4K kindergarten or first grade, they're eligible.
Regardless of if they were already at that school.
Correct, correct.
Nobody ever said it was fair.
That's what it is.
So it's a unique challenge for the public schools to be prepared to offer a program that people want to come to.
I would like to think that the reason our enrollment numbers are off is because we didn't account for the voucher, the impacted vouchers.
And they're included in those out students?
They're not included at all.
They're not included?
How many of those kids actually are counting for 7,200, Tim?
About 40.
So next year, they won't be able to get this money, right?
At every year.
Once they're in, they do it, yes.
And then the new enrollees are the 4K, K-8, and first grade.
So there could be more next year?
Yeah, but I do think it's important that we do communicate to your public what portion of the dollars that you're collecting are being paid out for that program, so your public understands how this program works.
So it's interesting, because it doesn't cost $7,200 to go to Peace, right? If I just tried to send my kid there and pay it, it's probably like $2,000 or something.
Yeah.
I think the major question is, we have to ask ourselves, why are kids choosing to leave us? You know, that's the important question.
That's the major question, because I know Wasanu started participating in the voucher program over there, and they're constantly recruiting to get kids into their school. They're using that as a tool to bring kids in as well.
What I hear from so many people is the uncertainty in our district. The uncertainty in our district with our schools and facilities and everything. I've had so many people, because, you know, Moore goes there, so our paths are crossed, and they don't want their kids changing schools and things like that, so...
Yep, well, and we're doing our best to try to stabilize the situation, so hopefully once that happens, and people know where we're headed, things will be a little easier for us. All righty, Tim, thank you. Well, let's see, well, here's the next depressing thing, resignation. You're looking for a motion, please.
Remove the vote, accept the resignation. Tricia Medruski, of Food Services, effective September 29, 2017.
Second. Motion by Ms. Mead, second by Mr. Pyatt. Any questions on the resignation? I think everybody probably have a chance to read it, I think they can take a couple seconds to do that. Any questions? Bobby, let's do roll call.
Danielle Youska? JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jenny Long?
Yeah.
Jessica Mee?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
And Mike Golding?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We thank Tricia for her time, but she has moved on. Item F, donations. One motion, please.
I move the vote, accept the donations as follows. $25,000 from Andy and Leon Sheldon Charitable Trust for the Aquatic Center, $100 each from Stanley Brown DDS, George B. Chiropractic and Winter Winter Endings for fellowship Christian athletes, $150 from Baum Companies for fellowship Christian athletes, $628.75 from WIX Filtration for FFA, $100 from Inside FS for Fila Backpack, $401.55 from Teresa Schrader for North Elementary Phys Ed, $500 from Reshburnwood Insurance Agency for the Red Robin Clothing Closet, and $320 from the Navic Family for the Red Robin Clothing Closet. Total donations, $27,430.30.
Second.
Hey, motion for Mr. McKenna, second from Ms. Youska. Any questions on the donations? My wonderfully generous group.
What is the Red Rabbit Clothing Closet?
It was an idea started by one of the...
A student, so it was a student, yeah, a student and Celeste, oh, yeah. I think a student and a junior this year at the high school.
So it's a clothing closet for students, even the teachers and staff have been donating clothes and diet-free, fragrance-free detergent, so we're essentially going to have like a clothes closet for kids who don't have clothes, or else they're doing it at the middle school, because oftentimes, kids don't have something to wear, if they have a player concert, or they have high-ed class, or it's cold out and all they have is t-shirts. So we have bags and bags of clothes at each site and shelves going up, and we're going to have hours where we open in like little facilities for kids to try on the clothes, and it's open day on.
The other questions, I'll answer.
Mike, I'd like to just comment on Sheldon Charitable Trust. I think Sheldon Trust has given the Aquatic Center $25,000 plus for the 14 or 15 years that it's been open. They donated $100,000 for the splash pad. They have been just the tremendous support of the Aquatic Center over the years.
Very nice, very nice to see that the trust is in good hands and is willing to share their wealth with the Aquatic Center, so we appreciate everyone. I guess we will just take a voice vote on this. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, and we do thank each and every one of them for their generosity. Well, that gets us to the end of the business, but we need to promote you to a jury.
Oh, no, Jay, I blanked one thing. I'd like to invite all the board members, if they want to come and observe or preferably participate in one of the drills. I'll send all, I have a Google gun there started, that lists every school on the date that they're going to have it, and all of them are from 3:30 to 4:30, and that's noted on there as well. So if you can make it any, please, please come.
Thank you, appreciate that. You very much so. Well, that be it, Tim, you got anything else? Good, then we'll look for a motion to adjourn. Well, you got Z, but Danny Pyatt, he's looking for session. Okay, motion for Mr. Pyatt, second to Ms. Long to adjourn. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.